Let's call this meeting ordered. App and planning board, May something, May 15th. Take me through the minutes of motion. You go through some?
Yep.
We're looking at May 1st.
Second?
They can change his direction? No? All's been right?
Aye.
All's opposed, nay? Alright, sweet.
First could be?
Correct commando. Uh, no business. Rachel Daigle find out issue on the end of the end, the end of consideration best possible, best practical location.
I'll take that out of order to, uh...
Oh, to facilitate the, uh, the arena counter here?
Yes. Well, the application just came in, so currently just for the plan to go take a look at and, uh, put on the next agenda.
This is line pro and ask code for which is which. Who are these guys?
One of each.
Oh, really? Uh, well, let's do line pro. Line pro's here?
Sure.
Oh, my name's, oh, an application for conditional permit.
It's that one, yeah. Uh, they're looking to relocate the office that they were about Cravie Bear to the residence next to Cravie Bear on the side.
Oh, that little yellow house?
Right, a year, yeah, a year and a half ago we came in and got our conditional permit to go up above the restaurant and, um, the, the construction and everything was still, isn't quite finalized up there and then, um, the house became available next door and everybody involved decided that would be a better situation for us first floor, you know, our machinero versus, you know, the staircase up to the second floor. Um, you know, it's all, it's all the same property that the approval was on before, but yeah, we would be looking to...
So, are you guys buying that house?
Nope.
You renting it, renting the space?
Yes, just, just like we were gonna all stop on the, on the other building.
And what is it now, residential, you wanna change it?
Yeah, it's currently residential or, you know, the guy that lived there that I know for the last probably three years, he's now one under there. Yeah, so what we would like to do is, is move our office from above the restaurant over to the main part of the house and then there's, there's kind of a lower wing on the house and, um, you know, I'm hoping to as part of all this, I'll allow my mother to, to set up a little, she's a retired art teacher, a little art studio slash, you know, gift shop for her arts and crafts.
Gallery.
Which, you know, there used to, there used to be a gift shop in, in the old, you know, where I guess the little catering hall is there in the restaurant now too and, um, Mr. Crowley's wife who used to live in that gift shop gave us her blessing to go ahead and do something over here instead because she, you know, longer interested in that, so...
Is this gonna be like a whole occupation? Do you have a...
No, 'cause I don't live in there.
No one's gonna be living there?
Yeah.
Just two businesses, basically.
Right. When would you be looking to be up and running?
Um, you know, the sooner the better just with our summertime Route 109 rush coming, but I, you know, at the same time we're necessarily no timeframe or any hurry, you know, we're, you know, I'm just currently working out of my home still, Chapley, Bruce Bond and, you know, um, she's kinda liking retirement, I've been smoking a little bit of trying to...
Hey!
Be a good idea with that extra space to do the shop, but, you know, if, if, I don't think she's in any hurry to be in there either, um...
What, uh, what zone is that over there?
I would believe it's commercial A.
Commercial A, yep.
Well, the application just came in, we could table it, put it on the next agenda to take a look at, 'cause you had a conditional use on the same property, it's just being relocated to another building, maybe it's just a, uh...
Well, it's not really the...
That it's unique.
Yeah, 'cause the house...
Was residential.
Right, and does that get a certain tax bill for that? I mean, is that like a house line?
It's all on property that leave.
Really?
Yeah, it's all, it's all one property with the restaurant property, same tax bill, same tax, same, not gonna lie.
But weren't a lot of the conditions we had, were they because he was upstairs above a restaurant?
Yeah, there was some entrance issues.
So now he's not gonna have the same fire and ex, yeah, and dramatic, Chris.
Exactly. It seems...
Seems less complicated.
...a bad allocation, they were less complicated.
That's where a lot of our hangup was, we had a lot of stuff we had to work out with the fire marshal to be up there and a lot of inspections, um, being over the kitchen.
I mean, he's not increasing any floor area, which we'd kick it up too, or new material process, not previously associated with the existential conditional use, um, it's good to get the paperwork all updated, but whether the board wants to consider it an actual new conditional use or just a revision to the existing, uh...
Well, it's gonna be in a whole different building.
It is.
And so we're looking at different issues with it, it's not above...
Yeah, the criteria change.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, it's, I think it's different enough that it would have to be a new thing, but... Same driveway and everything, this before?
Uh, yep, yep, it's the, it's the same.
Well, wait, it says in the document you're gonna change the...
The apple pool.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Well, it's the same driveway that we were going to be using where our sign is on the back.
Oh, yeah, but eventually, but that never really transpired yet, 'cause there's docks and stuff that block that from getting around, right?
Um, well, it...
Right now you can pull right into the house, correct?
Right, and then there's an entrance right next to the house where everybody goes to do the docks and, and that's where our entrance is on the other conditional use as well.
Right.
And what, you know, and what we were proposing to do is, is block off the driveway for the house, just so there wasn't any confusion for people when we were in that new building and it made kind of a traffic flow more orderly, pull in beside the sign and then you, you go left to go to our building or go right to go by a dock.
Right there.
But yeah, that's the same entrance on our other approval.
Alright, so that's not changing. Well...
With the condition of the subject connected property?
I don't know, I know they didn't have any issues with it when, when somebody lived there full-time, um, but I haven't had any sort of inspection or anything like that.
How many, well, I guess we'd have to know roughly how many people would be working there and what the subject usage would be.
Yep, yep, I'd be happy to kind of...
And there would be your business and then there would also be the, was it a gift shop?
Gift shop at Park Elder.
How many people would you have there?
I don't...
Just you, nobody else?
I don't believe so. I mean, if it really went worse, went crazy, maybe I'd have to hire somebody, but that's kind of wishful thinking and...
Yeah, and there's you and what, just you and you?
Yeah, me and one other person and, um, you know, I think on our last approval we set up four people just to cover a couple employees and things as well and that's what I put in that same cover letter as well, we probably haven't had a chance to read yet.
Yeah, why don't we, uh...
Oh, there was already, so there was already in the group gift shop there?
Oh, well, that was under, uh, that was behind the ice cream shop. That's what it, at first started as.
Oh, the, the, okay, yeah.
A gift shop and then they did the ice cream and then they did the restaurant and I don't know if the gift shop is still down there or not.
No, they...
The restaurant took that over, kind of, right?
Right, they pulled most of it out to make a little catering hall and, and stuff in there.
Oh, really? So, yeah. Well, you know, maybe we ought to table this so that we get a chance to, you know, review it first, other than, you know, kind of force it on its, force feed ourselves right now and then miss something that we may want to deal with and, you know, make it more, make it tougher for you.
Yeah. Then, what would be the difference for you or for us if we were just to revise? I mean, what's the difference between revise and adding in?
No, the difference, just the paperwork trail and, um, new is cleaner and easier probably.
That's what I was asking.
I don't care, you know, whatever you guys want to end up doing, I mean, if it was in a, a different part of the same building, you know...
A different...
But it's, it's in a totally different building and there's gonna be different things, different issues about the building, you know, maybe the doors aren't wide and who the heck knows, you know? So, yeah, I think we gotta wait and deal with this.
The landowner did speak to him at one point about it and one of the suggestions that he had already made was some handicap access, so they're currently putting on a front deck or a handicap ramp, you know, kind of preemptively, which I show on the sketch, but, yes, if there's any more suggestions, we're setting it.
Well, it's just, you know, whatever the life safety stuff is, whatever the code requires.
So just, uh, move them to the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
We'll probably do.
I think that'll be easier for us and whether you want to, well, I guess for starting is we'll keep the check there, alright? Yeah, we'll put you, first meeting in June, whatever that is. It looks like the fifth.
It's May 7th.
Whatever the first Thursday in June is. And, uh, we'll deal with it then.
When's the hearing gonna be reset?
Zero, oh, next year. Next year, maybe.
Oh, is you...
Unless they have, yes, unless they have a special time being later in this summer and I don't know what they're gonna do, but for now that's all, that's that for it. Okay, so we'll see you guys the first Thursday in June.
Alright, thank you.
If you've got anything else you need to give us...
That'll be my question, is there anything that jumps out in anybody's information you would like to see?
Have you been over there to check out the, uh, obviously probably not the old house?
I haven't seen it, he is, no.
Just to see what's what?
No, but I, uh, we'll start with Mr. Crowley and we'll set up time for some other questions to get some more information for the next meeting.
Oh, we might want to check, electrical too, you know? Are you gonna be running anything that's more than 110? Any big, uh, any blueprint machines, any kind of big whatever, whatever?
Yeah, I haven't, uh, bought format clutter, it's just basically a profile, every 110.
Okay, so you don't need any extraordinary electrical issues?
No, the only, the only thing that we planned on dealing with in that realm was we need to have the whole place wired for, for a network, for a computer network to be able to communicate with the servants.
Right, right, right.
Got somebody scheduled last weekend that, to come start taking a look at it, needs to be done there, but...
Alright, well, I can't think of anything offhand, but I haven't gone through all this. But I think, I think we're, we got a good start anyway.
That's something I appreciate a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. We'll see you in a couple of weeks, two, three weeks, I don't know. June 5th. June 5th, huh? What did I say? June 5th, I forgot. I knew you said it. I'm not gonna do your best, right? Okay.
Can I have that?
Yeah, take that, I left it for... Ashco Construction subdivision application.
And that just came in today, so I figured it was worth, uh...
Hey, 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 wait a minute. Jesus, I don't recognize you, it's been so long. Are you guys still in business? I see you moved right now, Dr. Hell, ice cream shop or something.
Yep.
Yep. Get out of the office and keep off Joe. The flower. So I'm jumping at Jesus, he's like, "Oh, Libya, right." Been a long time.
Think one last comment on tape, right? Did you get that last comment on tape, right?
And...
We don't need to generate a share one.
Each one, the, the little package, sorry.
This is on the same sheet, right?
Got it.
Okay, so go ahead, what's the story?
So, uh, looking to do a, uh, full lot subdivision in Poshville, there's that Ford Court Street, you know, mine, across from, uh, across from the Fairbanks, belongs to, uh, Mr. Dedson and it's, uh, Scott McCloud, Ashco, who's that person's sale, written on it, and that can do the, uh, full up subdivision, you know, it's, uh, Poshville, rural district and Poshville in the, uh, commercial acres, uh, lots about nine, nine acres altogether. Three of the lots would be right around two acres and then be one lot in front, that would be, uh, 3.83 acres. Basically, this is just, we're just looking at sketch plans, we just want to get some, get in front of you and have any ideas, comments, anything you want to make on it, uh...
This is where they did the horses?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, right.
So, the opposite street, yeah.
Um, the rural district, what, uh, what does it require there, you know? Is that larger than two acres and 250? No? Also, that's only critical, okay.
Jesus, this is my first...
We've changed stuff since you've last been here.
I still have to be. I love that one, yeah.
And so somebody is buying the, uh, the town or, or zoning book, huh?
It's online, nobody buys it.
That's the paperwork.
I want to recommend it.
Uh, one of the things that we are, the idea here is, uh, is that the light way, the existing light way to Paul Street is actually only 30 feet, but we're actually giving up, the boundary as was shown here, which actually gave up part of the property, so it makes 50 feet along where, uh, where the subdivision is gonna be. So, I mean, I think that's an important feature of this is that, uh, we've got a, a light way that's wide enough now to accommodate a subdivision there.
Even though it's partially commercial, partially residential, the whole thing's gonna be residential type construction of the four pieces of...
For now, I think it's just, he's just kind of subdivided, that's it, you know, and, uh, I'm not sure, you know, I checked, he, he, yeah, he can put residential and a commercial again, yeah.
Yeah.
And I, he may do it as a commercial in that, in that front lot, but for now I think he's just looking to get it subdivided and I think he's, because I mean, you know, Scott's builder, so I think he's looking to just get the, uh, lots for the building lots. We'll see it back.
No water access for these zones?
No, no.
Is there a road association for 12th Street?
Uh, I think they were starting with four one, it wasn't one that, that, it wasn't one last I knew, but I know, there was a guy came in and talked to us about doing it. Um, you know, I'm certainly, um, that's something that's, you know, I, you know, I think that, like I say, where, you know, Scott was willing, you know, give up the extra width and everything and try and get this to, you know, so, uh, I mean, he doesn't, he isn't looking to do a whole lot of improvement to the road, I don't think the road's too bad anyway, but, uh, just to give it that extra width so that, you know, anybody, anyone that would really need to develop it there.
So he just wants to divide these into lots and is he gonna...
Just looking to build on what Mr. Todd's...
Right, is there gonna be, okay, so we've got the building envelopes here then?
Yeah.
Alright.
I mean, this is, Paul Street's probably a road anyway.
Right.
And so, you know, technically this is possible to the center of it anyway and, like I say, it's okay. And the road is actually better centered once you do this as well, you can see, uh, the right way as it stands now, as we showed right now, against the gravel, so this is gonna center the road a lot better as well.
Well, so, four lots, is that a minor, is that a major now?
I think it's a minor.
Is it? What is it? Major, minor, come on, you said you read this.
No, I didn't, I know it is, I thought I was...
Oh, that means it's major, oh, you're so square. Yeah.
Well, technically, we're not constructing any road though.
You what?
We're not constructing any roads though, it's barely, barely a major.
It's four or more lots, so, yeah, so it just means a few more hoops.
I mean, there's a lot of the, a lot of the stuff that's contained in the major, I think probably isn't, isn't gonna necessarily take to this much anyway, because it's bad, a lot of what's in there has to do with, uh, shot Christmas trees.
Geez, I don't know, I have my, uh, my second. So did he give us a check tonight yet or no?
No, he just dropped the stuff off, so I figured you guys could at least look at it and put them on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, so this is even preliminary, then?
No, this is just sketch.
Social call.
Just to reacquire...
Yeah, sketch plan, site inspection, oops, site inspection. What's the rest of a lot here?
Uh, there was a lot cut out of that, uh, you talking about the back? Yeah, there was a lot cut out of that earlier on, a little while, it was actually last year.
So there's 12.2 acres, isn't it? 12.2 acres.
Yeah, that's what it says, that's on the tax map. The tax map, if you come to town, the town tax maps, they have it still, that piece taken off. In fact, they, the assessing has it wrong, they have the guy quotes this on the whole piece, which he doesn't, that's...
Oh, that's Panther Land Dominique Trust, is it paying the tax?
I don't know. That's what you do to make sure, make sure your tax bill is right.
Now you've, alright, so you've got nothing out there yet, no stakes or anything like that?
No, no, but we could have them pretty quick if you guys wanted to do a site walk. High Joe, right? Too busy. Now we can get it staked up pretty quickly.
Well, some of these guys have never, uh, been up to a subdivision site, so...
Tell you what, one of the things, I think, that, one of my other thoughts is, you know, we're very happy with the road, I mean, we pay for the road, the road's in pretty good condition, there isn't really anything wrong with it, uh, you know, that's a major issue is, you know, are we really gonna have to do anything to the road or is it okay the way it is? I mean, you really technically don't be adding three lots of that road, because, you know, the, our loss...
Right, but you're gonna be adding, in the event that all these end up being built on, you're gonna, you're potentially adding X amount of traffic per day.
Yeah, three, yeah.
Is that, is that three what?
Wait, it ends up being, it ends up being one, at the peak hours, I think it ends up being one per building, peak hours.
Oh, that's all it is?
Yes, I can't remember what the, offhand, what it is.
Well, it was...
Total per day, total per day's one of that.
Well, that, yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for, I just, I, well, I don't know, we might, I don't know if we want the road commissioner to go take a look at it and get his input.
We should get in touch with the road association.
Yeah, right.
They don't have a president or any sort of organization to it, this is a good time to form one.
Yeah.
Get in touch with the neighbors who buy gravel.
I think we're gonna have to have somebody look at and, you know, whether it's the road commissioner or we, if they have some kind of road committee, if we can contact them. You're right, the road really isn't all that bad, but, you know, I'm no expert. Do you remember the name of the guy who had contacted you from the, uh, who lived on the street about the potential of, uh, doing a...
Uh, it was quite a long time ago, actually, it was, um, he was an old, he lived in one of those lots there that's, uh, over, over here, so maybe that subdivision there, yeah.
This property, does it, it starts just past the right way for 109?
It was where we did the conditional use for the hamburger truck, that parking lot that had been used.
Right, so the parking lot, that, that gravel drive that parallels 109, that's part of this property as well?
Yeah, it was the old 109.
You're right.
It's on the, see, you can see the old...
Okay, alright, okay.
Say that.
Actually, that, yeah, listen, this one here, this is obvious, so this one, see, we actually show...
Oh, okay, gotcha, yeah.
And that piece was discontinued when they removed the road.
Right, right, right.
It's part of that property now.
Interesting.
The, uh, 109 is 60 feet wider.
Alright, well, uh, I guess our biggest, well, my biggest concern right now is the condition of the road and, you know, would it be able to stand up to, you know, let's say these places did get sold and built on relatively soon for some reason, that can be a lot of big construction stuff added out. So I think somehow we ought to get that assessed and find out if there's a road committee and what their status is.
Um, normally for people creating lots on a new road, they'll have their engineer design it out, give us a plan and build it and then their engineer also writes us a letter saying it's built in and it meets a standard.
Right.
Um, we could use, the applicant can use their engineers to write a letter saying it meets an A, B, or C standard for the town road. Slash, we need to do this, this, and this to get it to an A, B, or C standard, which have a standard when, when looking at, uh, a C standard's not very difficult.
Is that what this, yeah, I don't know what the stance of this road is, I don't know what the town considers this road.
It may not even be a C because it doesn't have the, um, uh, right way clearly defined all the way through. And again, I mean, it's a perfect time for road association.
Yeah, but that means everybody gets it, yeah.
So it's, it's all private road?
Yes.
But this gentleman owns four of the lots going up to it, so, okay, yeah.
Yeah, he owns half.
One of the lots.
Half of it.
Yeah.
One lot, right?
One lot right now, yeah.
Yeah, he's hoping for it.
Is it, is the C standard is the one that you, you would normally bring it to for?
That's the lower of the standards.
Yeah.
But I'd have to look in the subdivision regs to see which state we're looking at for this.
Because of the amount of traffic that goes in here anyway, maybe a bigger deal than just, you know, one that has just two or three homes on it.
Yeah.
Do you know of Scott to make that call on that side of 109? Well, Ken's right, they can have their engineer do it or whoever, you know, some professional assess the road for us.
Would you think that Ken's right? You actually have road board in this, right?
Yeah.
Yes, well...
Me too.
Yeah.
So we just need to know which one we gotta meet.
Which the subdivision regs you got.
Yeah, right.
I went through...
I'm sure they conflict quite a bit, but they're supposed to, yeah.
Keeps us in business, keeps the money flowing. Does anyone else have any concerns off the top of their head? Do we want to, uh, do we want to schedule a site inspection now or do we want to wait a little while before we get into this a little further?
So it's not even, you don't even have to worry about bringing it to the county.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, you know, people have some answers on the road by his, or... Because they may think...
I have no idea what he'd satisfy, whether it's a kind of existing one, I mean, I don't know, I would think he depowered his things he was, like, on the road, but, um, I think the guy that came to me was talking about trying four ones, so I don't know if they've ever had it, you know?
And the lots that are gonna be, two lots have two districts in them, so which setback requirement, does it depend on which part of the lot that you... Does it depend on which part of the lot that you?
It's how they use, they use, and I think probably most of the setbacks and the size are probably gonna be the same.
Commercial A is, uh, 125 feet and 175.
Yeah.
So there's one lot that's.
That's the front, would be the commercial A.
There's another one.
The second one back to.
The second one, first one's just about.
Right, but I'd have to look, normally in a private road, we can drop that setback, uh, down to 50.
Yeah, let's see larger model, the problem on that second one is actually in the, in the road. And I know that's gonna be.
The driveway might be enough. I don't know how that.
I mean, generally, generally. And generally, because, you know, the setbacks are set the way they are, commercial generally, because of the use. You know, obviously, it's because you want a larger block between a commercial use and a residential. So, the lots that use this residential, it's really a problem with them, that's why we. I got, I actually didn't draw this particular plan, I don't, I don't remember looking to see what the, what the ordinance set of all of those cut. You got a lot of those in this house, and you can see a little bit of it. Most of them, boy, that, you know, Cash had called me about that, I said, usually you go around the lots, because otherwise it causes a lot of problems, we really want to put that, make that circle in the town there.
Next door. Uh, alright, so does anyone else have anything they want to, uh, any more information they would want from them at the next meeting? See what we can, see what you can find out about the road, and we'll see if there's a road committee there and what their status is. Right. Yeah, what, what would, what, does an engineer consider this road be fine for adding, you know, four more houses?
Yeah.
Three house lots and some kind of a possible business?
Well, like I said, you know, I think you could see, there's a commercial business there, I mean, I think they probably would access it right directly off.
109. Well, there is an old curb cut there, but it's.
I mean, something, you have to get a view of this for a natural.
Right, right, right.
I, I, it would be more advantageous, I think.
So you're gonna have 250 feet.
Alright, that'll be good.
Yeah. Alright, so, uh.
I think we'll see in the June 5th.
250. Everybody's well, I mean, uh, still, this is just sketch. We may get, it may be preliminary then, maybe we'll have enough answers and we can start this process.
I mean, I.
Right.
I'd need 250. If your preliminary plan is probably five hundred feet, but I don't know.
Try your fifty, yeah.
Try your hundred fifty. All that road. What if road engineering?
Oh, it's from these, what's the frontage for these routes, for these, uh, lots? It goes from dot to dot, I think, doesn't it? So that's 167. Fifty-three.
You have to just add those up, yeah.
But still, what's?
They all have enough. It's two hundred and thirty.
Yeah, 167 and. What's 82?
Exactly, two hundred.
Okay.
Exactly, two hundred fifty feet. The second one, the second, the third one in is, uh.
It's 242.
It's just older. 250.
How about the one that's 200, 2.05 acres?
Well, you've got 12.2 and 229.
Yeah.
I think quite 250.
No.
Rock road. Well, this is, I don't know what this commercial one, what this, uh. How much that means? Yeah, you may want, somebody may want to relook at some of these.
Just this, just that one, I think is right on.
Yeah. If this has an excess, yeah.
It does a little.
It's my gift not to draft anything. You know, I, with Joe, Joe kind of on the piano, and I made him, I made him, I made him re-cut it, so we had enough. So we had enough frontage, so we better have enough frontage.
Well, maybe there is, and it didn't, it didn't get, you know, transferred.
Yeah, I guess, I didn't.
I don't know.
Unfortunately, I didn't draft this thing, and I just kind of threw it together kind of quick, so we could get it in. At first, I might see this way.
Somebody ought to test the wheel out there.
No, I'm sure that this, you know, if it comes, it, it's done, it's done from, from here to here.
Which one, this one?
From here to here, it's enough for.
Exactly 250.
You know, this one doesn't need it, this one's in front of you. In fact, I originally designed this, I originally designed this thing where it came from here to here, so it actually five lots. There's enough, there's enough for.
Yeah, but then, but then you get one that's, that's too funky, though, we can't have.
Yeah, right across like this.
Yeah, we can't have funky lots. Well, because we can't. We can't do this.
Odd shaped lots.
So, why is it odd shaped?
Because it's not, it's always gonna be in a rectangle.
Oh, if it's a rectangle, it's definitely odd, cause.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not taking it.
Short by eight feet.
Yeah, I know.
Somebody's getting scum on tomorrow.
Yeah, well, you know, I think, I think Dan will be able to prove this. Well, I did.
It's his name on it.
I know. That's what I meant, when I checked in the glasses.
Well, anyway, well, then, then. Closest.
Yeah, yeah, we got, we like I said, we got all the frontage on that first one, we got plenty of frontage here, because we all needed frontage on the, on Wall Street on that first one.
Right.
We kept as much as we wanted out of that. So it's funny, it's funny that we had, we used to tell the line over there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You have both numbers, we just wrapped it.
Well, that's, that's, that's. It's just a sketch, this is, yeah, it's just a. Alright, so, we're all set then?
Look at the road, and then they can stake it out, and then the sidewalk.
Alright. So. Who, I don't know.
You're gonna, you're gonna set the type of sidewalk, yeah, to meet the zip line.
That's what I have, I'm pretty sure.
We might.
I just want to, I mean. We're busy, but we can stake it out.
No, 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 don't stick on yet, unless, until you know exactly where your lots are gonna be. And, uh. No, then, after the next meeting, after the next meeting, we'll pick a time when we'll do a sidewalk, so then, because if we take a stake at after that, and move all that way. Or if, just make, once you're comfortable, we'll just take it whenever you want, all we need are. You know, the, the road is basically, for us.
Yeah.
Just to walk down the road and take a.
Be able to move the setbacks, because these are the setbacks.
I, so, that's, that's, this Thursday, I'm not gonna be able to be here.
That's what I thought you said, yeah.
You want to be here the second, or the third Thursday? Well, you can do that too.
I can get Berwick, they have the same thing.
Wow, what?
We're getting back into this thing, we've got so many subdivision going, it's like Sanford and Alfred and Wadham are all on Wednesday.
Ah.
I used to run into that all the time, but I don't have Joe to send anymore.
Well, if you can't be on the agenda, let us know, if you're not gonna.
Well, I, you know, I may not, I may not be able to.
Well, you're not gonna be here either, right?
No, but there'll be enough people here.
We need a.
Cash will be back. That'll be fine. So, uh.
You'll see, I mean.
Well, put you on the agenda, and we'll, and if you've got, you may have more information for us, that would help too. Maybe you'll have something that, you know, you know about the road right away, you can send the candidate, you can give that to us. If you don't want to be on the agenda, let.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to think about, you know. I hate to put it off for another two weeks, though, because, but, you know, I could easily, I could easily get a preliminary plan together by then. It's just, I don't know how much I want to put into it until I'm a little certain about things.
Right, I hear you.
I mean, you wouldn't have, like, the only thing you wouldn't have would be, would be, like, for some reason, there was an engineer that needed that road, that would be the only thing not on it, I suppose that would be fine, so.
Yeah.
Alright, alright, uh. Yeah, we'll, we'll save it for this, but now.
And we'll see what happens.
Send Dana.
Hey, there you go, he just finds.
Sorry to play you.
Alright, well, thanks, take it easy.
Alright, I guess so. Quick question, Ken, how does, this whole thing, the protection district, how does that come to be?
There's no real regulation in Akron, the district, the district was created, but there really isn't much. Uh, it's in the last page of the districts, it doesn't really. Doesn't really have much, it changes use, as long as it's not as midland or, um, for that area too.
Yeah, yeah, just since it's residential, it's not really.
Yeah, and, no idea what's. Well, there's a few up around town.
Right, we want to keep an eye on that, I guess, I understand, I mean.
Well, that will, that, this takes more review down the road anyway.
Yeah.
It may even take the, the dreaded site plan.
Oh, wait, this is an extra.
Does say that in commercial A is 125 foot.
From the front, the sides would all be.
Well, that's, that's, that's gonna be from both.
Soon it starts going like that.
12th Street and 111.
Mostly, this second, all the, mostly commercial, they start shipping.
Yeah. And what about the lots that have 101 district?
Choose to where the building is and stuff, that'd be the second one, which he said was gonna be residential. Their driveway may come in the commercial zone, but I think the house.
The house is in the rural district.
Yeah. Which then it's a 50-foot setback from the road.
Alright. Dips. Uh, what's next?
We need to own a best possible location, we did on, uh, October 17th, and once they got the surveying work out there, they were a little closer to one side than they thought. They're only two or three feet off the side. And we slid them to 10, that's a couple of photos of it, it had that huge deck in the front, which needed to be removed. Alright.
Oh, what was that?
Blue.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
No, it was in that frame, but. They were, yeah, we asked them to, when they rebuilt, to be two feet, so they weren't eight feet from the farthest line, they were gonna be 10 feet, right?
I think, we moved it to 10, and it's, it's, there's two feet easy with that design that they've got to slide it over. Could we bring it to five feet? On one side and 10 feet on the other.
Yeah, so what needs to do?
If you think reducing it down to five feet or sliding it over, the two feet to get it five and 10 feet on the other side, it's feasible, and.
The heaven.
But how much have they done on it?
None.
Oh.
Once they got the survey work, that was the first thing they did, is once they knew they could do it, they sent surveys out, found it was closer, and the lot was tighter and there, than they, than they were hoping.
Is it changing their distance to the water at all?
No, that's just sliding from side to side. I think they've got like a 12-foot deck on the front, which didn't have permits for it, and they bought the house, so they have to rip the deck off any.
Front being the left side?
Correct, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, what, so what are the side setbacks?
They're two feet now, three feet, 2.7 feet, something like that. And 12 feet on the other side, so if the other side was dropped down to 10, that would bring them up to five. So it gets them almost twice as far as where they are now, but only half of it.
Alright. The difference was the difference when we approved it originally?
We went to 10 feet.
On both sides?
Correct.
So it's significantly less than.
It's five feet, it's half the required for twice as far as what it is now. It's half a 50-foot lot, I believe is what it is, so there's not a lot of room.
Were they trashing it and rebuilding?
Correct.
Is all the footprint? They're not using all, it, was there no foundation or no?
Brand new foundation.
So this 12.7 feet turns into 10?
10, is what I would drop that down to, and then.
Yeah.
Well, we can tell the shape of the house.
I was just looking to see how wide it was.
Ooh, so relaxed.
Thirty-two. Twenty-four, thirty-two. And there's inches left over.
I mean, it's already, it's already, the old place is already, it's so close to the same.
Yeah.
It's not like it's any new.
Well, they're moving it to there, you know.
They, they're keeping the existing septic.
There's a brand new septic up there.
It's already in there?
Yeah, it was put in a few years, oh, 2000, that was a few years ago.
We've got a hole.
It's quick.
They got a hole in the thing, is that what it is?
No, it's a full field.
Because it's a good, that's what constrains moving back.
Moving back, yeah.
The existing septic.
Well, what the heck, that's a problem. The current, the current is just two feet on one side?
Uh, they've got the plan.
It's 3.06 on one side, and 12 point, well, 12 feet seven, 12 point seven. Seven inches or seven, 10, whatever. It's three on one side and seven and 12 on the other, so it's gonna be five on one side and 10 on the other, approximately.
Six of one, here goes. So. What would we do, just amend our conditional use? Amend our best possible location?
Yeah.
Or redo it? I mean, we gave it to them, you said last October?
Yeah.
So does that in theory make it more non-conforming?
No, it'd be less non-conforming.
Because of, because of two to five?
Correct.
Yeah.
I just forget rid of their deck already on the way in.
Right. I think it was 12 feet by 32.
Quite a deck.
Yeah.
Maybe they could put like something on the roof, you know.
Those feet.
Right.
Little walk or whatever they call it.
A nice big one.
Something that we accept, Ken, for condition, and allow them to go to five and 10 feet. Sir, second?
No, second.
Any further? What? Any further comments, suggestions, questions, conditions? We're gonna go with the original conditions, we're just allowing them to kick it over the lot a little bit sideways, correct? Anything else, it's gonna be the same?
No, no changes in the vegetation from last time, you know, removing or doing anything particularly.
Yeah, no nutrients or anything, have to be 86?
No, because no trees, they were pulling in, and they were playing the photo one ratio, so.
Alright. So everything's, yeah, everything's the same except for they're kicking it a little bit in the lot sideways. Anything else? Al's a favor, I am? Al's a vote, mate? It's a good deal. Uh, minutes to the 20th of March, Art and Meet John Doe, what's your pleasure? Art, here, take me in. And now, I'll take a motion on those minutes. And now, I'll take a motion on those minutes. As soon as one of you two are ready. Is there a second? All's in favor, I?
Aye.
All's opposed, A? Great, thanks. That's done, that's cleaned up. Now, Stormwater Kids, what's up?
Well, Paul emailed, or made the last final correction he was gonna make. We haven't met yet. Um, if you want, Brenda, I can, I'll forward you the copy he sent me. It's on, do you think it's on mine? I mean, I, I don't know what...
I don't think it's on mine.
The next agenda's gonna be, but it'll give you what we're, and, and the document you wanna be comparing it to is the original Forest Belt, you know? That we have from, from, well, 20 years ago. I can get it, I can help you, and I've got it, too. Got it? You know which one it is? Yes, okay. So, I don't know if it has it. Uh, you know, I have a little...
Yeah, the last, yeah, last meeting, we canceled because Tom's under the weather, and we have one scheduled for... It's probably two weeks from tonight.
Or one week from tonight.
We have, we have two, or one week from tonight. We have two of them scheduled tonight. We did, we canceled the one, so we got one, yeah, one week from tonight, yeah.
Alright, well... When you get something from them, why don't you... Email those guys and send me a hard copy of it.
And also the Forest Belt. The original Forest Belt.
For anyone who needs it, I, I would take a...
We, now, which Forest Belt, the original or the one that we dropped on and changed?
Because we changed. We worked on a little bit, yeah, we locked those changes in there.
It didn't have much work on it. Yeah, it was very minimally worked on.
I think so.
And we did...
The version we used was very minimally worked on.
Alright, alright, alright.
Maybe it's better. I would like it.
So we're all in the same book, you mentioned the wrong book?
The same wrong book.
Alright. Okay, good. And, uh... Oh, the zoning change proposal, well, they put that on hold because it didn't exactly measure to what we had. And they may not want to, they may only be concerned with RP that's in shoreline and not RP that's, it may be critical overall or something else.
Tom was worried at last.
Yeah, so we would have to change... We might have to change the zoning. Well, it depends how we would. If, if they just say RP in shoreline, then I guess it would be alright. But we would also have to change the land use, you know, the land use chart.
Yeah.
Was there something else if we went with pretty much what they presented us? But I guess they're gonna wait on it for a while, and when they pick it back up, then they're gonna come down to, they're getting some more information, I guess.
So, wait, they're only concerned with... With...
Lots that are in...
That are lots that are in shoreline, they don't care as a wetland on another large property in the, you know...
No, they're just concerned with lots that are, that have been changed, the RP that fall within the shoreline zone. Because those, some of those people are coming to the town now saying, hey, I can't build on this land now, and you never told me that you were taking it from me, so I want to bait.
Yeah, and that, I was reading, it's kind of confusing because there's this 75-foot strip that's excluded, and I don't get how that exclusion works. It might have been my misinterpreting it, but it starts with an exclusion when you read it. So it says, um...
What page?
All land, page 30, all land within, oh, wait, okay. Resource protection shall include the following areas exclusive of the area within 75 feet. I guess that means 75 feet from a stream, only the stream and not wave or pond or... Under purpose, 4.2.1, the very first sentence, a couple sentences.
Exclusive of the area. Does that mean... That's also included or in addition to the 75-foot setback from the...
That's what I figured out, and it also says that the, the already developed area, as long as it's developed, like, whatever that density formula is, is also excluded. So I don't know how to, how, well, yeah, I guess you have to measure 1,000 feet and then figure out...
That's a map. The color-coded map.
Okay, well, I was just, you know, I was, I wanted to do my homework and I couldn't understand it.
Well, I hear you. That, that, yeah, I, I don't exactly know what that sentence means, to be honest with you. Exclusive of... I think it means in, in addition to. But exclusive to me means it's exclusive.
Yeah, that's what, that's what my normal... And then it goes on to say that, yeah, except, and shall include the following areas, and it never lists the areas that, that are following, ever. It just lists what's not included in the following areas, so... It's just an odd paragraph and I got stuck.
Well, that's a good, a first paragraph.
I, I can figure out the rest, kind of.
Is that control?
But...
It's like state.
Exclusive is different from excluded, so...
Exclusive of... Maybe I just need to get a dictionary out. I'll, you know, I'll work on it.
I think it means that it doesn't include that because that's already covered, and you can't mess with that.
I think. I meant 75 feet.
It's already, it's already restricted. Yeah, yeah. And we can't change that. I think that's what...
But if you, yeah, if you take that out, 250 feet start, 75 feet away from a stream, or...
Resource protection shall include the following areas. If you take that part out, include all the areas of the normal high water line and the stream, that doesn't make any sense.
It may just... Maybe it's safe that there's already a buffer for that kind of stream, and so... Well, like, again, does it count or does it not count? As area?
So maybe 75-foot setback.
Maybe you already can't build on it, yeah, that would make sense. But you already, you can't build in resource protection either.
Can you do anything in resource protection? You can have a private campsite, maybe.
Maybe.
Or maybe they'll hurt the clearies.
Well, you can use the land for forestry. Yes, uses of the land, interpreted felled, man.
What do you mean, that's what they're determined to talk about?
It includes following areas except those areas which are currently developed in the shoreline zone.
Right, they're like, that means they're like grandfather.
Right. But now they've decided that that's all they really want to...
I believe that's all they're concerned with is the, the new lots that we created a few years ago that we called RP... That are within the shoreline zone, which is 250 from the high water line. We have other spots in town that are resource protection, but they're not in the shoreline zone.
Right.
Those they don't care about, apparently.
And if it's in shoreline and there's already not a certain density, can't they already, uh, do something, or is...
The river's not that way.
Because it's saying if it's already developed... I don't, I just have to rethink it. I was kind of in a hurry when I was reading it.
With the guy on Hopper Road, he wasn't fouled up on that, was he? Wasn't he, he was fouled up by the resource...
By the ratio.
Off the shoreline, right?
Correct, I don't know. I thought that was like... These swamps, two to 10 acres are in the shoreline zone.
I wouldn't think anywhere.
No, I don't think any, they're all... You guys are gonna see the 10-acre contiguous with the...
Yeah. Well, that's where I need to be, because, and when they do get, they'll come down here and we'll work on it together, that way it'll line up with what we have, and we can get a better idea with, you know, with their figures. Alright, and with anything else? Okay, no, Brenda? Well... Oh, wait, what? Uh-oh, we missed bedtime for Bonzo.
That's right.
Someone's gonna be bummed. Well, thank you, good night, Cable Land. Thanks for coming.